All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome to our September 28, 2022, meeting of City Council. We are going to start off with a special meeting, so at this time, I would like to call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Dennis?
Here.
Buckingham?
Here.
Rivera?
Here.
Washington?
Here.
Walker?
Moving on to our item for new business, a resolution authorizing the submission of a letter of intent to purchase Dent Supply.
So introduced.
So introduced.
That is Resolution Number 107, introduced by, no, I'm sorry, that might be one way, introduced by Queen of Washington. Counsel, I'll let you know that there's been an amendment to the resolution. I will read that amendment as part of this resolution. A resolution authorizing the submission of a letter of intent to purchase the Dent Supply West College Avenue campus for $4 million, whereas the property commonly known as the Dent Supply West College Avenue campus generally located at 400, 500, 570, and 600 West College Avenue in the city of York is for sale. And whereas the property is valuable to the city of York because ownership and control of the property will allow the city to ensure that appropriate redevelopment and adaptive reuse occurs which best serves our citizens. And whereas council in the city of York authorized the execution of a letter of intent to purchase the property at their May 3 meeting with the approval of Resolution 57, and whereas the seller has made edits to the submitted letter of intent to purchase, which clarifies buyer and seller responsibilities, revises dates, and reduces the site from 30 parcels containing 17.38 acres to 28 parcels containing 17.29 acres. And whereas, and this is what was been added, this next whereas, whereas special counsel has reviewed the proposed letter of intent and suggests that an escrow agreement should be drafted and entered into simultaneously with the execution of the letter of intent, which escrow agreement will specify the mechanism for the return of the city's deposit. And whereas a fully executed letter of intent to purchase will allow the seller in the city to enter into negotiations. And whereas a fully executed letter of intent will enable the city to receive specific information about the property and perform due diligence activities about the property. Now therefore be it resolved that council authorizes the controller and the mayor to execute and submit to the seller a letter of intent to purchase for $4 million. And then this part was added, which shall be, which shall be executed together with an escrow agreement and drafted and approved by special counsel.
Move to approve.
Second.
It has been moved in.
I'm sorry, that's Resolution 108, not 107.
It has been moved and seconded. I do see Mr. Nace here. Did you want to say anything?
I can say as much or as little as you wish.
What's the resolution number?
108.
Good evening. Blandon Ace, Chief Opportunity Development Officer for the city. We recently, and just for general knowledge, we've had two information sessions over the last two days with council reviewing the, what the execution of a letter of intent entails. And that will provide us the information, not only on the site, but it allows us the ability to go in and look at title issues, easements that may exist on the property, operating costs, utility bills, environmental reports, and information about the site that we would be able to then execute or use to develop a purchase and sale agreement that will then come back to council on that, on that full agreement. So this is an interim step, so to speak. We did work with special counsel Rebecca, who's been, from CGA Law, who's reviewed the letter of intent and has suggested the two edits that Diana read in. One is which the, the letter of intent specifies that a deposit would be delivered at the receipt of this information of 1% of the sale price. And the, the letter of intent intends that that is refundable, should the city desire not to buy it or execute the purchase and sale agreement. But the language just wasn't that clear. It only says a deposit would be delivered. And council's suggestion is that we add that it be deposited into an escrow account, that we're not just writing a check to the seller, that third party, our, our special counsel would hold that escrow then. So it's, it's a little bit simpler to recall that money back should we decide to, to leave, to leave the agreement. And further clarifies that, that money is, nothing is binding. And there was language that was added in the edit to the LOI that says that this LOI is, is not binding. And ironically, the language that was added by Dent Supply really benefits the city as well, saying that this is not a binding legal agreement. So it was kind of this gray area, the way the language was written, is that it's a non-binding agreement, but at the same time, we're transferring money. And anytime you transfer money, that, that binds things. So if we transfer money into an escrow account, and then we will have an escrow agreement that further defines that we have the ability to bring this money back should we decide not to move forward.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? I have a, I have a question.
So in the information session yesterday, when we, we went through, I don't know, items one through 15, I don't, I don't have my notes with me, but potential conceptual uses. At one point there, early on, several months ago, there were a couple of parties interested in certain sectors. Are they, are they both, are they both for profit? Were they both for profit?
All of the parties that I have talked to that have been interested in the sites have been for-profit developers.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? So I'll go ahead and, first of all, thank you very much for, I don't have any questions at the moment. Thank you to administration for holding the informational sessions. That was helpful in regards to answering some questions. And I usually don't do this, but I feel like with something of this magnitude, I will share with the public the questions that were initially sent August 18, and then the follow-up round for questions, just so that the public knows some of the discussion that occurred in regards to answering these questions. So this was in the first email, 12 questions. First one, an estimate of possible carrying cost, i.e. insurance, utilities, maintenance, and how they will be paid. Second question, what funding is being suggested to purchase the property? ARPA funds wastewater treatment plant proceeds. Question three, who will determine the general redevelopment plan for the campus? Question four, could purchasing the campus without entitlements place us in a difficult position when redeveloping the property? Next question, has a general overall redevelopment vision been discussed? If so, what does it potentially include? Will it benefit residents, businesses, city revenue? Question six, what will be the RDA's role versus the city's role in redeveloping slash owning this property? Question seven, should this be a joint venture? Will a contract between the city and the RDA be drafted to define roles, responsibilities, and revenue? Are we aware of any major issues with the property? Is question eight, are we, are we aware of any environmental concerns? Question nine. Question 10, are we aware of any liens on the property? Question 11, what are some immediate risks we may encounter in purchasing or owning the property? And question 12 of the first round of questions, is there an exit strategy should plans go And then the follow-up questions for round two were sent on Sunday. And those questions are as follows. Let me make sure I have the right round of questions. Give me a second, I have to go through my emails. Oh, you got them? Thank you. See, technology versus paper, I tell you. Okay, all right. So these are questions that were sent on Sunday, September 25. The first question, I remember seeing the word non-disclosure at some point, has a non-disclosure agreement been executed? Question number two, what legal counsel is reviewing LOI and advising possible acquisition? Question three, are there any known environmental considerations or issues outside of unseen phase one and two? Question four, I remember seeing general concepts, but what is the redevelopment strategy or steps? Next question, who will manage the redevelopment process? Question six, how will the city recapture investment? Question seven, if the city does not maintain ownership, is our acquisition amount a grant, a loan to the RDA, and will the RDA pay back the amount? Question eight, LOI, September 30 date, please give clarity. And question nine, going back to earlier question, but why does LOI state that the buyer is unrepresented in this transaction? So those are the rounds of questions that were, were sent. And just again, as I said, thank you to administration, Mr. Nace, Director Watson, for scheduling the informational sessions, because with something of this magnitude, we need to make sure, especially with public funds, that we are executing due diligence. So thank you for sharing the information and answering questions. Before I move on to my, I think it would be my last request, are there any other questions or couns, questions from, or comments from council? Okay. I still am a little concerned about the LOI. And I know at our informational session yesterday, we were able to retain CGA. So I do have a question in regards to the LOI. You have a chance to review the, and if you want to introduce yourself, that'd be great.
Hi, this is Rebecca Shaneman. I'm from CGA Law Firm, and I am acting as special counsel. And as Councilwoman Walker said, I did review this LOI.
Thank you. So with the LOI, what were concerns for you? I know that there were recommended. We did get that email probably around 3:00 PM today, but I didn't get a chance to review it before this meeting. So what were some concerns for you with the LOI?
So the primary concern I had, which was addressed by the amendment to, to the motion, was that this is a slightly unusual LOI because it calls for the transfer of money upon signature of the, well, not upon signature of the LOI, but upon them giving you the phase two. Typically, the money doesn't transfer, typically, an LOI is drafted so that everybody knows the terms under which to draft the purchase and sale agreement. In this case, because we know that it was a heavy industry use in some parts of it, it makes sense, and I think Mr. Nace did a good, good job getting that information, that phase two upfront, before you actually go to the cost of developing a purchase and sale agreement, because you'll be able to see that right away and see if there's any big red flags before I have to necessarily draft. Having said that, the, the issue it causes, as Mr. Nace said, is that typically you don't have to pay, nobody puts up earnest money until a purchase and sale agreement is drafted. The purchase and sale agreement lays out the terms as to who holds that earnest money, the escrow agent, and when and how that earnest money is returned. So because you're giving them money before purchase and sale agreement's executed, and this letter of intent says it's not binding, which is good, you don't want it to be binding, but we need some binding agreement because you're giving them money. The escrow agreement that I'm, that I made reference to in those amendments would be a binding agreement. And that doesn't bind the city to pursue, even get to a purchase and sale agreement. All, the only binding authority would be that CGA is holding the money in trust. And that, and we would add one slightly unusual statement for escrow agreement that would say, all parties here too, which would be the city and the seller, recognize that prior to the execution of a purchase and sale agreement, the city could terminate the negotiations under the LOI, at which time the full deposit would be returned to the city. And with that, with that statement in the escrow agreement, my concerns under the LOI have been addressed.
Thank you. For me, I need a bit more time to review the LOI. And then we can converse with legal counsel and administration as well. How does the rest of council member, how, how do you feel?
I'm fine with that.
Yeah, me too.
I'm fine with that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions or comments from the public?
Matt Enright Dover, quick question. It was stated that the amount for the escrow agreement would be 1% of the $4 million. Just to clarify, that would be $40,000?
I believe so, I'm an English major. But yes, I think $40,000.
I mean, I did, I did Google, I did Google calculator, so I just wanted to come up and.
But you're right, that was my calculation earlier today as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the public?
As it regards the LOI, are there any trigger clauses? And actually, who makes that decision? I'm sorry.
Michael Walker.
Regarding the LOI, which we haven't seen as the public, are there any trigger clauses regarding the LOI? And does that trigger clause trigger a purchase agreement?
Can you explain what you mean by that clause?
The trigger clauses are who and how does this LOI now become a purchase agreement? And who makes that decision? But then, does the city make that decision? And once that decision is made, where the city council and where does the, where, where is the decision after that?
Yeah, yes. Mm-hmm. You can come up to the, to the mic, so.
Sure. So to answer that question, the way the LOI works is immediately upon the LOI, some due diligence material is given to council, given to city council, and also to special counsel, and presumably to the city's engineers, because that's who you're really going to want to look at, the phase two, which is what they're going to give you right away. That's explicit in the LOI. You have, I believe the LOI says we're going to use reasonable efforts to execute a purchase and sale agreement within 45 days. So essentially, the LOI itself is a trigger clause, because we're supposed to start to negotiate that purchase and sale agreement that flushes out these issues further, for the sense of scale. An LOI is about 10 pages, a purchase and sale agreement's going to be about 45 to 60, so there are additional issues that will be negotiated in the process of the purchase and sale agreement. At any time, though, if, at any time, city council feels for any reason, including the review of the phase two, that this is no longer an option they want to pursue, they can terminate that, we don't have to get to a purchase and sale agreement, and the money would get returned, you know, per the terms of that escrow agreement I laid out. Does that answer your question? Thank you.
Follow-up question. As it regards the decision.
Just come up to the, to the mic.
Michael Walker, as it regards the decision for the LOI, for what, for what you just discussed, who ultimately makes that decision for the city? Is it city council, mayor's office? How are the, how is that negotiated? And who actually pulls the trigger on this?
I actually think this is a question for city solicitor, not for special counsel.
Yeah, the purchase and sale agreement is, is what actually would effectuate the sale, and the, that would need to be approved by city council. So council will, will get another bite at this apple.
As it regards, excuse me, Michael Walker. As it regards the development of this, public hasn't seen the plan. This is coming off the tax rolls. As such, what are the plans for development? What are the plans for the community's input into the development? And none of that has been really discussed with the community. This has been a key, the community's been a key stakeholder in that area, grew up in that area. And we haven't seen any kind of plan. This is coming, I believe, off the tax rolls. I do believe I reviewed the taxes since 2015. What are, two questions. What are the plans? Where's the community's input into this? These are public dollars, from what I understand. Number two, what is the plan to mitigate this particular property coming off the tax rolls for the city? I know we're fleshed with money at this juncture, but we may not be that way in two years. And the way, and the historicity of these particular projects, we've been five, six years into development, and we're still dealing with that. So where's the plan? That's the, that's the final question that I have.
I believe that would go to you, Mr. Nace.
Part, part of the strategy for redevelopment is developing that plan and engaging with the community. I, I feel it's really critical, and in fact, I have some estimated preliminary costs. And as part of my estimated preliminary cost was actually hiring a facilitator of sorts that would be out there, that would be literally door-to-door and engaging with people and getting the input and the feedback. I think that's, I mean, the whole reason behind this is to make sure we do the right thing for the people. So we need, we can't do that without the people. And I think there's several iterations that we would go through with, you know, kind of a vision plan and creating a vision and a master plan of what not only makes sense for the community, but what the community desires. You can't, you can't do this in a vacuum. This is, really is a community project. And I think that's, that's the vision that, at least, I think we all have moving forward, is that data-based facts, but with input from the community as well. Does that make sense?
If you want to, if we can. So I, I believe the tax roll question also came up yesterday during our informational session. Did you want to talk about that?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I actually took a screenshot. Just FYI, because I know it's been asked before, the tax liability on all the parcels, now this is all 30 parcels, the, the LOI was revised down to 28. There are two small, empty lots that Dent Supply desires to sell to the adjacent property owner, instead of making them part of this. The total tax liability is $190,000. The county portion of that is $18,700. The city portion of that is $60,200. And the school property tax is $111,601. So yes, that, that would, in the interim, obviously, like any other city-owned parcel would, you know, come off the tax rolls. The goal is not to sit on this for as, as short amount of time as possible. The, the, and community input will take time. The, the visioning will take some time. But there are parties who are interested in jumping on this property and this site right away. And I think, you know, my goal is to have this down as, as little as possible, to get this back into the hands. Now, with that, keep in mind that, just for future discussions, this will come up, because we talk about the future. In fact, one of the questions asked was, what are the, you know, the financial benefits long-term? You know, the, these properties as redeveloped will definitely be a higher assessed value than what's there now. These properties will be improved, people will spend money. However, these properties are all eligible for LERTA. So this really is a long-term vision, because the LERTA process phases in the development, the change in assessment over 10 years. And that's automatic on any, it's automatically approved on any property in the city, based on city codes. They just have to submit a letter when they get their building permit. Same thing with residential, too. Anyone out there who wants to improve their house, there's a form you can fill out that holds your tax value for 10 years on your residential improvements. And that's to encourage people to improve their properties. Commercial properties are no different. So anyone who invests on this property, of course, as it's subdivided, it'll get reassessed on the, on the subdivision, but they won't be additionally taxed on the improvement. It will be phased in 10% per year over 10 years, should they apply for LERTA. And that's a, you have to fill out the paperwork, and, I mean, most developers would, but that's.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
I apologize, I also have a follow-up, Matt Enright Dover. You talked about phase two, can you kind of just define what exactly phase two means? Thank you.
That's a good question. So that's part of your environmental due diligence. So a phase one and a phase two are how you assess whether or not there are environmental concerns, any reason to believe that there would be environmental remediation necessary. A phase one, an environmental engineer does that, and that is just based on historical use and, and a visual inspection of the property typically. If based on either of those two exercises, there, a concern is raised, then they suggest a phase two. A phase two is almost always soil testing. So they actually like drill wells, and then pull that soil out and go get it tested, and they test it for all of the measurable contaminants that the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection puts together, the DEP. And that's how you know whether or not you think that there are environmental concerns at the location. And then a good, if there are, a good environmental engineer is pretty good at identifying a scope of risk, and then that will often get allocated, that, that'll get negotiated. And all of that, like how we would handle that, well, would be set for, for there in the purchase and sale agreement. But you would have a right during your due diligence period, under both the LOI and the purchase and sale agreement, to get out and just get your money back if that phase two comes back too concerning. Or, you know, that's obviously at the discretion of council.
Or do additional testing.
Or do additional testing. And that would be just sort of how these things go. If additional testing is necessary, that would be, be an amendment to the purchase and sale agreement, and we would be able to negotiate, you know, who pays for that and how long the time goes on. That's just kind of, this, that's just kind of the, how it goes. You know, nobody can make a promise, but you don't have to proceed, but everybody usually wants to come to some kind of resolution, unless you see something really terrible that the city doesn't want to get themselves involved in, obviously. Does anybody have any questions about a phase two?
Not the phase two piece, but in the LOI, when it mentioned about the waiver in there for due diligence, and the due diligence period, since we're talking about the LOI, can you, can you give us your opinion with that?
So the due diligence period, the way it's worded is a little funny, but it doesn't cause me any real concerns, because what it says is you get, you get that, I'm sorry, I have it at my desk, is it, it's 30 business days for that, for that. And then if you don't terminate in writing during that 30-business-day period, they deem it waived, meaning that's no longer a contingency. You've just, you have, because you haven't terminated in writing during the agreed-upon contingency period, you have then decided that you've done all the due diligence that you want to, and you're satisfied with the condition of the property. So, you know, if you would go through the LOI process and the purchase and sale agreement process, we, that contingency period would be calendared on my calendar, on all of your calendars, so we would know, you know, so that there would be a series of communications before that, that runs to say, hey, do we want to let this expire? Are you comfortable with the property? Or should we go ahead and terminate and get, and terminate it and get the money back? So they said waived, it's a funny terminology, it wouldn't be how it's described in the purchase and sale agreement.
That's confusing to me.
It is confusing.
So, and it's concerning. And I guess it will lead to more discussion, because if, if I'm thinking, if I see something in writing, when I'm thinking of due diligence being waived, when I read it, it looked like we would go forward with a purchase agreement. And so.
Let me grab it real quick, so I can look at the exact language while you and I are talking.
Okay. So it's, the language in question is in that second paragraph under the due diligence period, and it reads, "If buyer determines that the property is acceptable within the due diligence period, buyer shall notify seller in writing of such approval and waive its due diligence contingency." So you can see there, I can understand why that, you know, the word waiver is a scary waiver, but I think if you read that sentence in its totality, it really doesn't cause me any concerns because you can only do that by a written notice. Like, so it would be act, it would be an action of council to waive it. It wouldn't happen automatically. See, that's because it says, "If you determine the property is acceptable within that 30-business-day period, you would, buyer being the city, would notify seller in writing of such approval and thereby waiving the due diligence contingency." At that point, your right to get out of it and get your earnest money back does disappear, but you've done all of your due diligence and you've been satisfied. If, if at the end of that 30-day period, you have not, you're not satisfied with the due diligence, we would not waive the contingency. We would send out a notice of termination instead. Okay, so in... In the LOI, when it mentions the parties, I would take it as the parties would be the city. But who has the authority to waive?
The city.
Due diligence.
Buyer.
Who exactly would that be? Would it have to be a council to send something in writing? Would it be the mayor? Would it be Mr. Nace? Who, who would that be? Because it's not in writing on the LOI.
That's right. And I don't actually, I don't have an answer for that, and I'll tell you why. Because this LOI is between the buyer and the seller being Densply, right? So this, so what you're asking is an internal city operation question, which, of course, it's a valid question, but it's not addressed in this document because frankly, your seller doesn't care. So if that, you know, seller is saying, city's going to have the authority, city's going to tell us who has the authority, and then you have the authority. So I will let Blanda and Attorney Sable speak to how, you know, I don't know how you want to tick and tie that answer to your specific question, which is internal to the city, who has the ability to terminate the agreement. Thank you.
Yeah, and I would suspect, given how government usually works with council being a legislative branch, and the administration being the executive branch that actually enforces the laws, naturally, that would, I would think would fall to the mayor to, to, to send that letter out, if a letter was to be sent out.
So we do need to have more discussion about that internal piece. Because if, if LOI is coming to us, but then we have no authority to waive due diligence, then that becomes a problem. I think that's all the questions I have for the moment. Any other questions or comments?
Manuel Gomez, resident, of course, City of York. I think we all know how I feel about this generally. Not going to belabor those points. One of the most particularly vexing aspects of this is, number one, we haven't addressed how we ended up having a special session to have to discuss this, which is of course not the norm. That's the number one thing, and it sort of seems like we're ready to rush in and we're all on the same page. Definitely not. Don't have the language before us as the public to be able to speak to this authoritatively in any sense makes me extremely uncomfortable. I don't know if I missed something. I clicked through every single deep link and link I could possibly find, not sure what's going on there. Giving the sum of money, it's not a tremendous amount. For the City of York, it's a significant amount of development that should be taking place, at least prospectively. We should have some sort of central repository, something central where we can democratize this better than what we have. That's number one. What the president spoke on here as to who's actually the party to the buyer, who's the buyer, may sound like parsing language, but that's actually key. And it's something that stood out to me because it almost points to how we ended up at this special session. It was the fact that perhaps certain elements of the government thought this is ready to go, whereas those checks and balances once again kicked in. And that's a good thing. I want to see due diligence. But where does it leave you from here? You should seek to define those things. I wish we had the language before us, but what would be, really be speaking to if we don't have it? I don't know why it wasn't publicized or what's going on. It leaves me completely baffled. I'm not used to seeing this, this way. If I'm anything, I'm not a neophyte to these sorts of endeavors or sessions at council. This is strange. It leaves me feeling tremendously offbeat. I'm not feeling any more grounded or well in terms of seeing this move forward and giving officials such like Mr. Nace and even Mayor Helfrich himself, extremely experienced people that should know better how to handle this, especially if you want support from community stakeholders at a broad level. This isn't how you would do that.
Counsel, of legal counsel, is the LOI public or confidential?
Again, as special counsel, I was asked to review the LOI, so I can't speak to what, you know, Mr. Nace and I think Attorney Sable can tell you where the LOI is in terms of its view for the public.
Attorney Sable, is it, is the LOI public or confidential?
I mean, it's real estate negotiation, so usually you don't want to, want to let that out for, for what you are.
Is it public or confidential?
I mean, I, I would actually have to review the right-to-know law to see if it qualifies. I, I think it would fall under an exception of the right-to-know law and not be public. But I'm not sure offhand. I don't want to give you a definitive answer tonight.
Okay. I do believe that that's an extremely valid point because we are mentioning the LOI. So I would request an answer in regards to whether the LOI is public or confidential. Mr. Gomez?
Madam President, thank you. If I just may have the floor briefly, not necessarily the LOI in full or in part. It's okay. I'm sure it's going to be considered a working document. I'm not wasting my time or resources and then wasting the cities on seeking a right-to-know necessarily, not from here. But in terms of carrying costs, disposition strategies, you know how big I am on that. That's the type of thing that we can see. It was my understanding that carrying costs and at least those measures of due diligence, at least as best that we would know them, were already being conducted with the first initial letter of intent. And I thought that was the purpose back then. Not even going to go back down that route and retread those steps, but that was my initial understanding. There's certain things that you can actually relate to the government that don't necessarily involve working documents and your plans and anything that you want to do to tip off anything else in the market that we don't control. I'm fine with that. But there's so much more that we just don't know, that you most definitely could have been transparent with, would have made us feel a lot better going forward. We speak with a lot of things with a sense of certainty. You remember my analogy of the catching of falling life, special, a knife, especially dealing with real estate of that size and that complexity? This is not just looking at a parcel and say, here's where it'll go there, and it's a straight shot, and you're done. This is extremely complex, at least from what I see. Multiple parcels, it's a broad campus. Look at how long some of these other buildings that you would think you can look at yourself as a member of the public and say, this is what may go there, this is what may not go there. And how long have they sat vacant? We've been responsible for the carrying costs and everything else, and on and on and on. We could go further into that. We should all know, if we know the track record of development in the city, and what happens when we take those shots. It's not always as simple as it may seem. I think these are fair questions. I don't have an issue particularly with Nace and some of the other officials. I know them to be very diligent once they get to a certain point, but I want to see more of that from the outset, just initially, from this juncture going forward. Because at this point, I don't feel comfortable with this at all, and I can't be the only one that feels this sense of unease.
I do, I do want to, because I've waited patiently since Mr. Enright jumped, jumped the gun for me. In response to your, to your response to my question, I, I'm going to, if I remember correctly, Councilwoman Dennis in May, you made a request that had something to do with housing and how it was going to impact the community. You said you have a group of investors and other partners, yet the community has had no participation in that. So how does that actually answer the question? Because we don't have any sense of what's going on here. Who are the investors? Where's that information at? All right? Thank you.
Sorry, I, just to clarify that point, there, there are no investors. There are, you know, the... No, there are, there are none. This is all city. We have...
Hold on one second, please. Thank you.
Yeah, I, there, you, we had talked before about potential for housing developers or people who were potentially interested in the, in the site. We had walked the site previously, before the city made its offer, with other parties who were interested in buying the site. As my job as an economic development, I had the chance to tour with the site to tell them about the city and why they should locate here, and what incentives the city would offer, and just essentially meet and greet with anyone who's interested in developing the site. Since that time, then the city decided to make it submit its own offer. So the parties that I have spoken to in the past, when you asked me about, about housing, they were, they were for-profit developers who were interested in the site previously. Our thought process is, since they were interested in the site prior, as we carve out the site and create a vision for the site, we would assume that they would still be interested, if not more interested in the site, because now we have a complete vision for the entirety of the site, not just the one particular building that they may have been interested in, in that time. To Mr. Gomez's point, I 1,000% agree. And essentially, when you referenced the May, the May LOI approval, we are still there. We've submitted that LOI that was approved to the seller, and they edited it. And because of those edits, we need council to re-approve it. So that's essentially where we are right now, is just the approval of the edited LOI that came back to us. And we have not, we have, other than that, we've had time to contemplate things. But no, I still have no idea what the utility costs are. I have no idea where the easements lay. I have no idea the environmental, because we don't, we haven't received any of that information yet. So in that meantime, from May to now, we've just kind of contemplated, and we've thought about ideas, but we haven't had any information. And so where we're at right now is back in May. We're still, we're still waiting to get that information. So there's, there's nothing to present. And in my mind, moving forward, as things develop and as ideas come forward, this is nothing that should happen behind closed doors. This is completely out in the open to provide everybody to say, hey, here's an idea, what do we think about it? And I love the idea of a, almost its own dedicated website where people can comment and look at and see and go to and, and see what the future of this, this is 17 acres. You know, this is a big part of, of the city, and it runs from MLK Park to Bance Park, all along the edge of the creek. And the only vision that's been done so far is what the Economic Alliance has put together for the Cadoras Creek improvements. And that's the only visioning that's, that's really officially happened. Everything else, and even some renderings or some color-coded things that I presented to council, were literally just some ideas of what could be. But we need the community to see what could be there. And I agree 1,000%, but essentially, we're still back, we're still in May 3rd right now with some edits.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I have a comment. Seth Predix, and I'm just a local investor for the city, and this is to Blanda, will you be issuing an RFP for this site? And who will decide on the RFP? And what, RFP is right for proposal, so developers can come in, propose uses, you can have this, the residents comment, you know, and who decides on that?
Actually, we're just having that conversation, but yeah, long-term, yeah, you're months, if not a year ahead. But the, the vision is similar to, and I, I shared this with council earlier today and yesterday, in Greenville Unity Park project. Greenville developed, you know, millions of dollars in this great park, but they also identified sites where affordable housing should be built. So they actually hired architects to develop sketch plans and said, you know, here's, here's what this building should look like, here's the number of two bedrooms, here's the, it should be, you know, 50 to 80% AMI, it should be this, this is what we envision as the City of Greenville to be built here. And then they put that out to bid. And they have eight sites where they're doing that. And so far, they've, they've unveiled the vision of the first four sites, and they just awarded last week the contract for the first site of, of new homes to be built. And those are 50 to 100% AMI. And they're providing subsidizing, different story a little bit, because they're subsidizing the development and providing housing costs. But in that case, it's a great scenario where the city took the time to create the vision on, across eight different parcels of what type of product they wanted there, and then put that out to RFP for, say, here's what we want you to build, who's going to build it? And that's how I think this should happen. I kind of envisioned this master planning, master visioning process that the city and the community, and there will be consultants, and like I said, a facilitator, there should be people hired to gather all that input and create some, you know, at first, rough guesses and rough renderings of what this could look like. And then you start engaging engineers and talk about how do you separate the utilities running between the buildings, and where should the property lines go, and how do the med ed easements affect all of those things? It is a very, very complex site, but it's already built. So that, that helps and hurts a little bit. But it's, there's, there's not a ton of unknowns from a bigger picture. You compare, and I know everyone mentally is preparing it to the Northwest Triangle, that had millions of dollars of environmental remediation that had to be done across multiple property owners. In this case, it's nice that it's a single property owner, who's a corporate entity, who has a fiduciary responsibility to its stockholders to make sure that they maintain environmental compliance. So we've got that going in the right direction. A sole owner has information about the entire site. Even months, if not a year ago, I was provided floor plans. So I have the floor plans of the buildings, doesn't do me a lot of good without a lot of detail, but we have been getting those kinds of things, not as part of the purchase, just as FYI, Mr. Economic Developer, here's what the building looks like. I think moving forward, the city, in conjunction with the community, can create a vision of what this site could look like, should look like, almost must look like, and subdivide it and put it out to bid. And say, who's going to do this for us now? And how do we make this vision a reality? So that, that's kind of the big picture. But right now, where we're at is just getting the data to be able to even start deciding whether we want to move forward with this. We may get this information and say, whoa, that's, that's a lot. Let the private industry deal with this. In which case, we do have some control via zoning and, and what entitlements we would allow there. But we would, we would be able to say this is residential. This is a certain density residential. We can dictate by zoning if this is affordable housing or attainable housing or anything like that. So this does give the city the ability to lay out the community vision, other than what should it be zoned as? And that's a challenge we run up against all the time. If you've ever attended a zoning hearing board meeting or a planning commission meeting, there are constantly people coming, and they grant waivers like they're picking fruit off a tree. Because a developer will come in and say, well, I know it says commercial, but I really want to do this. And it's been approved. So this is our ability to really give a, a better control over the vision and the completion of this site, above and beyond what we would say if it's UN1 or UN2 or RS1 or EC, which has limitations, but not, not detailed limitations or visions.
You can come, you need to come up to...
Yeah, well, his question, his question was who decides? And this has come up a couple of times, and I, and I think we were right. It's, it's an intern- of times. And I, and I think we were right. It's an internal, it's an internal decision process. At some point in time, it may be day, it may be day 10, it may be day 28 of the due diligence process, there's going to have to be a go, no-go decision made. And my job is to gather all the, along with the consultants. I have an environmental consultant already on board. I've got the city's engineer already teed up. We've got these professionals that are experts and special counsel that are all going to gather all their information. And my job is to gather all that information, provide it to council and the administration. And somewhere, and this is where you're right, we need further discussion, somewhere in that line, we will have to make a go, no-go decision based on the risk versus reward that we see, based on the data that we gather as part of this LOI process. So we will have to figure that out, is who makes that call. But then that's just as critical as anything else. But that, that's where we'll, we'll be, at some point, there will be a, there's going to be a go, no-go.
My question is-
You can, you need to come up to the podium.
My question is, after the purchase, if you decide to purchase, who decides, you know, how that is broken up? Which developer does all 17 acres, you know, 17 acres, or 17 developers do one acre? Like who decides that? You know, how is that bid on? Is it, is it this council? Is it the redevelopment authority? Is it, you know, staff? Like how is, how is that decided?
Again, to be, to be developed, to be determined during the, the visioning process and what it's going to look like. But I think that's another thing internally, where government needs to figure out what the, what the process is. If there's an RFP issued, and we were just talking about this an hour ago, if there was an RFP issued, there's going to be a matrix, a decision thing. There's going to be points for certain things, deductions for certain things. There's going to be performance metrics that are going to be part of an RFP for a developer. So all of that will be developed as the site vision is developed. We're just not there yet, Seth. We're just, yeah. Yeah. You need, you need work. You're looking for a job.
I could tell. We know what an RFP is, Seth.
It would support for anybody.
So, so as is the case with many of the decisions we make here on council, you know, there's a certain level of risk factor to many of these, to many of these decisions we make, right? So I appreciate the passion that Michael Walker and Manny and Council President bring to the table regarding this particular purchase or sale. However, the informational session that we went through today, I think Councilwoman Walker has been through it twice, was very informative for me, with a lot of passion, although a lot of, you know, great things happen in which may never come to fruition. However, this is a great opportunity for us, I believe, to purchase with, doing, with the proper due diligence, right, Mike? To purchase a piece of land that the city will have control over in the resale to ensure that we sell it to those seniors or to those with housing disabilities or whatever the case may be. I think if the city purchases it, we have a better, a better say into what we want the use to be. Instead of allowing dense supply to sell it and then all of a sudden, it goes to the highest bidder. So again, I love the passion of where this is going. And even Seth coming in and saying he wants a piece of this pie, right? Seth owns the building next to my house, the seven-story building on Madison Avenue. So I got a bone to pick with him regarding all his construction stuff. Anywho, no, we, we appreciate the work you did there and it looks beautiful. Thank you. But again, so there's a certain level of risk factor in anything we do. But we all need to work together. We all need to come together and, and make sure this gets done right. I certainly am not against the city purchasing this, as long as the questions that council, Madam President has, or other people in the audience have, are answered. And, and ensuring that the city is making the right decision and we don't purchase this parcel and, and then it sits for years and years, deteriorates, and all of a sudden, we've got another problem in our hands. And so I say, you know, again, I love the passion. We need to make the right decision. I would love to see the city purchase this. And I would love to see it go back into the community to make it work for the people that work, live, and play here.
Thank you, Madam President. Once again, Manuel Gomez, I just want to clarify, the last text that we had access to as members of the public showed a $5 million sum. This was before it was pulled from any action at the last council meeting. In other words, when I tell you I don't really know what was going on and how we ended up from the May LOI to now this, after this, or during this special session, that's why. Because you're, you're sitting there as a member of a public, you see a 25% jump, you think, really? Already? Doesn't sit well. But all that's been said, I just want to say, if we have any faith at all that due diligence is going to take place as a consequence of the letter of intent. And that's pretty clear. So it just becomes a question of, do you believe it's legitimate and viable for the government itself to continue down the path of land banking and real estate measures? That's just the question. I don't see a sea change in government. So it looks like that should be what takes place. Allow them to engage in their due diligence. And then as we move forward, we're going to have to see if we end up purchasing. I would love that we were at the point of a request for a proposal. By the time we're at that stage, I think we'd all feel a lot better. That'd be a wonderful place to be in, far, far, far from that place quite yet, I would think. But just hearing a lot of what was put on the record today does make me feel better. I appreciate what the officials have brought to the fore. You may want to simply proceed with this LOI once you've satisfied your request for information. There's no other way for that due diligence to actually take place.
So another suggestion I would have is, would it be possible for those that have questions regarding the LOI, Manny and Michael, would they be privy to sit on any type of committee or any type of meetings you may have? So that, their front and center with any of the questions that may be brought up? Getting the community involved is part of this process.
Eventually, sure.
You can-
No, this, this, sorry, apologies. This, this ties back a little bit earlier to what we were saying about actual visuals on the actual LOI, is that there is, under municipal governing law and the Sunshine Act, one thing, and obviously, just like a private industry, you don't want to necessarily put out there what your, what your offer is and the details of. So any real estate transactions are typically, you know, covered under the Sunshine Act as, as things that are, we don't want out in the public. There are some, some information, and in full disclosure, and some information that I did receive from Denspl already, I signed personally a non-disclosure. So I, there's an NDA that is in place for the two-page executive summary of the environmental reports that have been done. But we don't have the full environmental reports with all the backup, just a general statement. And in that case, I've signed a non-disclosure that, you know, I can't talk about. I can't share that information. But yeah, any, any time, once we're to that point where we suddenly own the property, yeah, floodgates are right open. Let's, let's all talk. Let's all talk and let's all talk about everything once we get to that point. But during the, during the due diligence period and even during the negotiation of the, of the purchase and sale agreement, that's the kind of stuff that is kind of privy to government and government alone.
Understandable. I think the young lady had a question.
I got it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Come on up.
Hi. Thank you, everyone, for being so patient with us and answering all of our questions. So I have two questions.
Please just state your name first, please.
Oh, I'm Ashley Hines. I'm a York City resident. I'm wondering why the planning for this property is so reactive? Like I'm wondering why the planning for the property is going to come after the property is already purchased? Like why isn't community input being collected by a consultant already before the, before the purchasing of the property? So that's my first question. And you can answer that right now. And then I'll wait.
I, I think in regards to community input now, it sounds foolish, but we don't want to waste our effort or our energy right now with a vision on something that we may not control. Should city council, should city council not vote to move forward? Or should we find something in the due diligence that is suddenly horrible and we don't want to do it? Then we're at a point where, well, sure, we can always vision. And we're doing that right now, actually, as part of the comprehensive plan process and the comp plan update. We're doing neighborhood outreach and we're doing community meetings and we're reaching out to the neighborhoods to say, what is your vision for the future of the city? Which creates our comprehensive plan. And then the comprehensive plan then drives our zoning. So hopefully, mid-next year, we'll have some closure on our comp plan and we'll have that completed. We started it pre-COVID. But we've done neighborhood meetings and we've done visioning on what the neighborhoods should look like and what residents need and want, and which will then drive our zoning. So we are kind of doing it, but just not site-specific. It's like, I can't, you know, I can't decide what color to paint Manuel's bathroom, because someday I might buy his house. You know, it's just, we're, we're just not there yet.
Okay, thank you. And then my second question is, what is the plan to make sure that the public acquisition of this property won't displace local residents?
Well, there, it's, it's, there are no residents there. It's, it's, it's an industrial property that's completely vacant. So there's no, there's no displacement of residents per se. However, you could, I'm thinking ahead, there could be a vision that's created through the process to where someone would say, we could do this if these houses weren't there. But I don't, I mean, I'm just mentally trying to picture that. Not saying it wouldn't happen. But yeah, I mean, we would have to deal with that as it would happen. Yeah, 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 yeah.
So I'm just wondering how, like, the public acquisition of this property will affect local property values as well as the tax burden of residents who live near the property? So if you can just talk about what your plan is to make sure that those residents aren't displaced due to a higher housing cost?
Yeah, no, I, no, I, I see where you're headed now with it. I, I, I don't have an answer to that without, without seeing the vision or seeing what's going to happen there. You know, one of our, one of our things we talk about, about affordability of houses as it relates to increased values or affordability, is the ability to improve the person's income as well. So a lot of times when you talk about displacement due to improvement, it's, the solution to that sometimes is better jobs for people, walkable jobs, employment, job skills, all of which are things that I'm, at least in my head, and hopefully the community will agree upon, are things that are critical that happen at this site. But at this point in time, now I just, without knowing what the vision is, we just don't know. And that's one of the, one of the, actually, one of the benefits is, we would control that vision. Right now, it's zoned employment center and we don't know all of the lookers who have looked at this property. Someone could come in there and by code, the way it's zoned right now, could make that a junkyard. And it's, there's one right down the road from it. And it's perfectly by code legally allowed to be an automotive recycling center, or whatever fancy word you want to call it, which I'm sure would probably not improve the property values. And it might not be the thing that we want to see happen there. So, you know, based on what's there right now, EC is any industrial use that's ready to, you know, create, create jobs, which is great. But it's also, could be anything that we don't want as well.
I see a hand up.
Hello. My name is Lindsay Simmons. So kind of just what I've been gathering from here is that the, like, city residents or like, the public just kind of wants to know being done with our taxpayer dollars in terms of like buying this building. And if I'm wrong, please correct me. I guess, I'm just confused, like, what the point of buying this building is if there isn't already like an idea of what is to be done with it? And wondering if there are any, like, pretty solid ideas of what is to be done with it? Pretty much.
Well, during our info sessions, general concepts were shared. So, and this was mentioned before when Mr. Naess spoke. I can't remember which legislative meeting that would have been or committee meeting it would have been, but affordable housing possibly. ALIS, I forget what the acronym is for that. But it is mixed. Can you come up and just, because you'll explain it better than me. I remember ALIS, though.
Yeah, I, I think generally, we, there's been a lot of discussion locally, if not nationally, on housing shortage, obviously, supply and demand issue at some point. But there's a, a group of, a group of residents or a demographic of residents called ALIS, which has become really in focus lately. And ALIS is asset limited, income constrained, but employed. So these are people who are renting. They're income constrained. They don't own their home, but they have good jobs. But they're just not good enough jobs. So there's, there's, there are in fact, some private developers who are doing housing development and they don't set a rent. They just say, your rent is 30% of your income. That's it. There's not, it's not 1,200 a month. It's not $800 a month. It's whatever, whatever your income is, times point three. And that's what we're going to charge you, which is a neat, a neat model. I don't know if that would work here. I don't know if that's appropriate. That's where we would get the community involved and start talking about things like that. But we definitely see a need for affordable, attainable housing. There's some, I think, some really good opportunities there for real high-quality housing, too. Particularly if the Cadoras project or when the Cadoras project happens, we'll have a trail there. There's water there, sandwiched between two parks. You know, this is, this is a good location for that. We've talked about some other potential ideas, potentially some office or employment centers. Light industrial could go there perhaps, because there are buildings that have loading docks. We've talked about job training centers. We've talked about commercial spaces. And again, that goes back to the neighborhood. What is, what's the neighborhood want? What do they want to be able to walk to? What should be built here? I have a vision in my own little mind of creating homeownership with retail on the first floor. So if somebody is an entrepreneur and they want to open their own business, they can essentially rent from themselves or open their shop on the first floor, which is the way cities were built. The cobbler lived upstairs and the butcher lived above the meat shop. So it's a vision of that that could happen. So it's, again, looking at national trends, looking at local demands, looking at neighborhood desires. All of that will come together as a community planning effort to be able to see what, what really is the best thing there.
Okay.
To the extreme, we know it's probably not going to be an airport or a nuclear power plant. Okay?
Okay. There seems as though there's going to be a lot of discussion and input in regards to this particular topic. It seemed as though council was in agreement to move this item to our legislative meeting. So is there a motion to move this item to our October 4th legislative meeting? I make a motion. It has been seconded. All in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No opposition. So this item will be moved to our meeting next week, October 4th. That adjourns our legislative special meeting. And the time is 7:09 PM. So we will call our committee meeting to order. And we have committee issues for October 4th and October 18th, 2022 legislative agenda. We are going to begin with our general committee. So up first, we have an ordinance amending the financial year 2022 budget. Looks like this falls under Dr. Dennis, but since it's general, we'll go ahead and see if administration has anything to say in regards to these amendments. Looks like this falls under Dr. Dennis, but since it's general, we'll go ahead and um, see if administration has anything to say in regards to these amendments.
Guess that's me. Alright. Uh, there is two amendments that are being requested. And first is uh, for the Highway Bureau, for Public Works. And this is a result of um, specifically, um, a couple of meetings back. Uh, council approved the sale of a dumpster truck. Uh, this truck um, was located out of the wastewater treatment plant. But in the original, uh, speaking of sales agreements, uh, with the sale of the wastewater treatment plant and the sanitary sewer system, the PA American Water. This specific, specific vehicle at the time, they weren't interested in, it wasn't supposed to be part of the sale because it was a new vehicle. We're like, eh, we could probably use it for, for some things. So um, as the sale progressed, um, PA American was like, you know what? We would like that vehicle. And so we were like, well, truthfully, we were keeping around to keep it around. So sure, if you will pay us 130, almost 131,000 dollars for it, we might as well sell it to you. You can use it and we can use the money uh, to buy uh, vehicles that, or replace it for equipment. And so that's where we're at. You approved the sale of the vehicle, the vehicle was sold. I stood at Runcles myself and signed everything over and we received the check. Well, now uh, uh, Highway Superintendent Keith Gerber and Public Works Director Chaz Green has come up with a plan as to how we can use the proceeds from that sale in order to uh, replace equipment. Specifically a skid loader that has various attachments that they can use to, uh, for paving and patching of the streets. Uh, Superintendent Gerber is very excited about this. This is going to um, improve uh, how quickly uh, they can actually address issues. Cause I don't know a lot about equipment, but I imagine this is a smaller paver that they can get in like back the alleys and the smaller streets where they can more efficiently uh, go in and patch the roads and, and certain areas as opposed to having to bring out the whole big old equipment. So what they are requesting is that now that we have the money on hand, we are requesting a budget amendment to show it as revenue in the budget so that we can then expense it out uh, to buy this new skid loader and equipment. And the attachments associated with it for paving. So that's what this uh, ordinance and budget amendment is specifically for the Highway Bureau.
Thanks. I see section two um, falling under economic and community development. Did you want to talk about that? Thanks.
Got that one too. This one is actually um, the uh, city has been uh, working uh, with uh, very, various uh, community members um, on what's called a local, a local sourcing initiative. Um, and they've been working for the last couple of years, um, last year or so, sorry. Um, on coming up with ways to um, make sure that the big um, not just the city, but other uh, bigger uh, companies within the city are sourcing their supplies uh, through local, local companies within. So uh, it's been a whole big thing with lots of people involved, including um, I believe uh, the Economic Alliance. Um, and so what this is, is represents that Wealthpan actually gave us a donation of $25,000 towards this purpose. Um, and this will go towards um, other professional services. Um, they have been utilizing um, several professionals who have experience in um, helping communities come up with a plan so that they can utilize local sourcing uh, for the companies. And so Wealthpan essentially has given us um, a donation. So uh, in order to actually spend that money, uh, we have to amend our budget to show the revenue coming in and then the expenses. And this would be coming out of uh, specifically uh, economic development. Uh, that is the cost center here under uh, economic community development. So that's what this is, is so we can show that we got the revenue so that we can put it towards the cause.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. Uh, this is scheduled to appear on our October 4th legislative agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that item will appear on our meeting for next week. Uh, moving on to item two, approving a waiver of sewer and refuse back charges. And this came from the solicitor's office.
Yeah, it actually didn't really come from my office. It actually came from uh, Mr. Predix, so I'll, I'll let him make his pitch to you, council. We just kind of facilitated the meeting.
Seth Predix, um, yeah, this is kind of a complicated backstory. I think I went over it. Two months ago, I can make it brief because I know you've had a lot of time with uh, other discussions. But um, I'm a local developer. My business, uh, grew up in York County, worked in York City, tending farmer's market since third grade. So familiar with the city. And then uh, when I got a little older, decided to start uh, investing in real estate. You know, reconstructing buildings, doing the construction, learning the construction trades. And my business model was always to recycle existing abandoned buildings. Um, you know, 10 years ago, there was a lot of those, you know, now a lot of them have been recycled and repurposed. But as Lou said, I did one close to him, uh, did the Keystone Color Works building, which we're going to talk about, uh, the Arctic Locker. Bunch of different buildings. So, long story short, um, in 2012, so about a decade ago, I purchased the Arctic Locker building, which is 275 Jefferson Avenue for $10,000. And, and completely uh, cleaned the place up environmentally, you know, removed, you know, all the abatement stuff and turned it into six apartments. Uh, same with the Keystone Color Works building. That's in the Northwest Triangle. Uh, that building had sat vacant for I believe 34 years, uh, purchased that building from the RDA and put 29 loft apartments. Uh, every single building that I've repurposed, uh, except for my very first one, because it was too far away from my house, we've kept. So we're, you know, local investors that fix up and manage. And what happens, you know, when you, when you're a business owner and you're a property manager, uh, you know, you try to utilize everything that's cost effective and uh, you know, better for your tenants. So on all of our properties, we have private trash service. So with these particular properties, we use Republic. Now, Republic is also who the city uses. So for, you know, for Jefferson Avenue for eight years, for the Keystone Color Works for five years. You know, we hired Republic privately to come pick up the recycling dumpster and the trash dumpster. You know, they came, they picked it up, we wrote them a check, it was recused from the city uh, trash contract. The other reason we like that is because we contact them directly. And when we have tenants move out, they charge us $10 per large item. So we get a mattress, we call them, they're there that day or within 24 hours to pick it up. So we can keep our properties looking clean. We got a bill randomly right before COVID for basically trash service from the city. So we called, uh, you know, got bounced around a little bit like, hey, we're off the trash contract, we have our own trash company. And they, they told us that there's an ordinance that's passed that anything under 50 units is automatically on the city trash contract. So, you know, obviously I was taken back because the trash that we hire privately, obviously I have a lot more control over. And also it's four times cheaper. You know, it's the same driver picking up the same dumpster. And it's four times cheaper because Republic's pricing you as if there's 29 toters. And all I have is 29, you know, one bedroom apartments. It's different than a 29 four bedroom houses. So we were trying to work out with Jason, with Chaz, with Dan, with the other lady. And then, you know, COVID happened and we had a national pandemic. So then everything kind of stopped. And then we revisited it and, and basically a long story short is we're asking to continue to use our private trash contract because uh, obviously, you know, we can control it and also it's, it's cheaper. And I guess just for a matter of fact, I, you know, I have a sales lady at Republic. We manage about 500 apartments. So you know, the trash lady's a weekly call uh, to, to organize picking stuff up. 175 West Gay Avenue, which is the Keystone Color Works, isn't even on the city trash contract. So they're not even getting billed for it, but somehow they're billing us. Uh, so I wanted to bring that to your attention. And I'm not asking to be, you know, uh, I'm not, I'm, I'm asking to pay the minimum. Which if you have a private trash contract, you pay $8.75 a unit and that goes to the city. And from what I'm under, what I'm understanding, the city doesn't even make money off trash. They pass it off. They make their 8.75 and they pass it to Republic. So really this would be affecting Republic because I'm willing to pay the minimum like I do on my other properties. But I just don't want to pay the total price, you know, and lose control. Because then I would have to call, you know, Public Works, Public Works would have to call Republic to get the mattress where I would rather control my own asset. Does anybody have any questions? And these, all these buildings were abandoned and I think that's why, you know, there was, I guess, confusion. Cause on all my other properties, North York, Spring Grove, Dillsburg, it's all private trash service. I think, you know, as a, as a, as a resident or not a resident, but as a owner of property in the city, you should look at amending that ordinance because 50 units is, is a lot of units. I mean, it's changed drastically over the last 15 years for multifamily. So I would, you know, if it were me, I would, you know, reduce that number and make sure you can have adequate service. And maybe they have to provide, you know, a waste management plan. And if you can provide that they're getting the trash service that you require, they could potentially shop it elsewhere.
Thank you. Uh, any questions or comments from council?
Yeah, and council, just to clarify, you have, you do have some options on this. Um, this is all in, in council's purview. So uh, his, your request is to have uh, the back amount balance for 275 Jefferson and 175 West Gay waived. And then going forward, not have, go down to the, the 8.25 rate, correct?
Yes. And just for clarification, we've never stopped our private trash service. We've always paid them. So we just weren't double paying. You know, the city was billing us, we were trying to sort this out, we were still paying Republic. So we just, the, the reason that this got a little fuel on the fire is because we got a shut off notice from York Water to shut off the water supply to our buildings. And we're like, alright, now we need to really figure this out. Because, you know, this is, you know, this was real. And, you know, for Lou, the RFP was for everybody in the audience that didn't know what that means. Cause I called that RFT, or RFT for about two years when I was starting out.
Yeah, we don't know what that means.
No offense there.
We've never had any of them come through us.
Yeah, but uh, but no, so this, yeah, this, this is a separate matter. And we would truly appreciate, you know, your consideration in this. Because I believe the more control a private investor has to keep his property clean, uh, the better. Because, you know, the public works persons on vacation, it could take us a week or two to get ahold of Republic. You know, and sometimes, you know, especially in Lou's building, we have 47 units there, you know. It's not uncommon to have five move outs in a month. You know, our people are very transient. That's why they like our properties. It's like, hey, we're going to move to California. Okay, give us your 60 days notice. Well, if I have 10 dump, or 10 mattresses sitting out there, I write a check to Republic for a hundred dollars and they're gone. So now if I have to call the city, it's going to take some time. Thank you.
Yeah, so council can choose.
I have a question.
Okay.
Yeah, so um, that was, more of my concern was the waiver. Um, I, has this, has anything like this historically ever come before council? Recent, since you've been.
There, there have been examples of uh, organizations asking for a waiver of fees or, or past due fees. Um, not to my knowledge of anything going forward in a sense. And that's, that's one thing that we, Seth and I did talk about and Chaz when we met. That really the best, the best way to address this for them, it might be a bigger lift, would be to get council to amend the ordinance, drop it down from 50 to 25 or 30 or, or whatever. Cause, cause what he's asking for is a waiver of the law.
Yeah, my concern is um, that if it was, if a waiver was granted, then it opens up a can of worms. I would like to have more discussion in regards to it. Um, when I'm reading, when I read the letter, I saw here, um, this would be line two, the third paragraph. The city officials granted a waiver for Madison Avenue property. When was that waiver requested?
That was like in fact, 2015 or so, 2016? Does it sound about right, Seth?
I thought that was more recent. I thought that was when we had, you know, our original discussions back right before COVID. And they basically said that that building was close enough. Um, and that kind of opened up the, you know, the waiver talk. Because I guess my argument with these properties, which makes them different from, you know, the six, eight, 10, 12 unit that, that currently has services. All these properties were revitalized and they were off the trash contract. And then we, you know, we had private trash contracts. So it's not like I'm buying, you know, a 10 unit apartment building and trying to call it, you know, cut cost on my trash and just, just wait, like trying to get it waived. I think these are kind of unique properties because they, they had private trash service before because they were industrial. And then we re, revitalized them, you know, they became multifamily. And um, you know, so they're a little unique. So that I think they were always off the trash contract and then we put them on our own private trash contract. So I'm assuming that's why they were overlooked. You know, 275 Jefferson was overlooked for a decade. It was, been 10 years. I'm getting old.
How long, but, but the apartments weren't, the apartments weren't, were, how long were they vacant?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, in 2000.
Cause they were never industrial, they were always residential.
They were, yeah. Yeah, I mean, like when, so like for the Jefferson Avenue, that was, that took us like four or five months. We didn't sleep much back then. And then Jeff, or the Color Works building took us about a year. So typically when we purchase them within.
Oh, I'm getting confused. You're right.
Yep, yep. So the, yeah, the Color Works building was purchased in 2015. The Arctic Locker was 2012.
Right.
Yeah, and, and they were always, you know, apartments since I've owned them, uh, and they've always had private trash.
I think you bring up a great point. I, I, you know, but I have to agree with council, President Walker. There's just more information. I think the process should have been um, the director of Public Works, who you have been working with, Chaz, probably presented this to um, councilwoman, president, councilwoman Dennis, who's in charge of that, who's kind of oversees that committee. And then the conversation be brought to council. Because I, I think we are opening up a can of worms with other um, contractors such as yourself and, and owners. Um, and I think just for me, my, just to do it straight across the board, um, rather than for one person and then we have to go through this process again, would that be the process? If everyone wanted to do this? And I, I just, I think that Chaz should have probably been here presenting your case. But I think that it needs to be presented across the board for everybody. If that's the route the city wants to go and council wants to go. That's my impression of how this would be. Because if we do it for one person, we're going to have a bunch of yous come into council. I don't know. I just think that that's probably the process that should have been followed.
I agree. Um, I think that should be the process that is followed. Um, and like Councilman Lou said, we're, if we do it for one, we're opening up a can of worms where we have to keep revisiting it. So I think that's how that should go as well.
So I have a question for my fellow. So are you suggesting that A, we change the ordinance?
I'm not.
And then B, address this?
No, I'm, I'm suggesting, suggesting exactly what I said, that the conversation that happened between Chaz and, and Seth, right? And who else? Jason?
Yeah. Well, the, the, the administration's position is, the administration's not for this.
I, I didn't think they would be because.
But, but he has a right to petition council for it. So that's why it came straight to council from his attorney.
And I would, I would have, I would have thought that that was the, the administration's position is that they don't want to lose any more money on this process.
But certainly the, the idea, the, the idea to petition.
Because I think, like I had said, we're willing to pay the 8.75 that goes to the sewer. Like if I had 51 units, I would pay 8.75 per unit and then I would hire Republic to pick up my trash. So now that I have 29 units, I will pay the 8.75, that's the city's fee. And from my understanding from Chaz, you know, if it's a hundred dollars and 8.75, 8.75 goes to the city, a hundred dollars goes to the trash.
So why is the city would be against it?
My understanding is that the...
I wasn't aware that the city was against it.
Hold on, just one second. Go ahead.
Yeah, my understanding is, is that the admin, the administration doesn't support waiving the, the past due balances, and I think, I think they'd probably be open to talking about reducing that number. I know Mayor Helfrich has talked to Dylan Bauer about that in the past as well, about reducing the, the fifty requirement down to a twenty-five or a twenty or a thirty, but I, I think that's really the way, the more effective way would, to fix this going forward than to grant waivers on a case-by-case basis.
Right, it should do it across the board.
Well, I guess my response to that is, the, the city's been very difficult to get ahold of. You know, we've had multiple emails that have gone unanswered. You know, this is why it's two years, and then once we get the shut-off notice, boom, you know, I can't have my tenants without water. So to Jason's point, you know, you have, we, yeah, we had a meeting with Chaz, where did it go? You know, nowhere. And at the end of the day, I was so confused as to, you know, do I pay the city, or do I pay my trash guy that I've been using for a decade? Like, what's, as, as a property owner, I don't want my tenants affected, and how can I pay the city for a service that they're not even providing? That guy doesn't even have a code to my gate to pick up my dumpster. So shame on the city for taking two years to get us to this point, in my opinion, because it was very hard. Everybody would pass it to the next person, you know. Talk to Chaz, talk to Dan, talk to Jason, talk to the other lady. You know, we were so, you know, misqued that I actually brought my attorney in and paid him four hundred dollars an hour to try to figure out this mess. So that's why I'm frustrated. And I also feel like your ordinance does need changed, but I also feel this is a very unique circumstance. It's not like we opened three months ago. We opened a decade ago on this one building. You know, it's been ten years. So why should I pay, I mean, some of these trash bills, like, since it's taken to get here, it's, it's thirty thousand dollars. It's real money. So I don't feel like we should be paying for a service that we never got and an answer that we never got. And like I said, from what I was told from the staff, you don't make money on trash. You make money on that eight seventy-five. Anything over fifty units gets eight seventy-five per unit, which we are a hundred percent willing to pay. We just would like to control our trash so that if there's, you know, overages, we can control it and we don't have to go through the city, which we've been doing for ten, you know, as long as, and, and I guess to the point, you know, every other municipality lets us control our trash.
In my opinion, I believe it would behoove us to take a hard look at this and definitely relook at the legislation that is already at hand to see if it would be beneficial for us to change it, but also to take time to hear out what he's saying, also to meet with Chaz, and to meet with all the interested parties in one room at one time so that we can hear what everyone has to say, instead of having different emails, different text messages, different phone calls, and different things back and, back and forth, so that we can be in one room and hear what the true matter is at hand, what is possible, what isn't possible, and if we do really need to look at changing the legislation moving forward, because as we know, there are other properties in our city that are going to be repurposed someday. We were just having a discussion earlier about one, and so we need to think about the future when we make these decisions, because, you know, yes, you're here today for it, but these things are not going to stop coming before us. And definitely, if someone's not provide, if we are not providing the service and we're charging someone for a service, we really need to check ourselves, and we really look at that, because if it was the other, on the other shoe, we will be, we will be checking someone else about our money. And so if we're going to be the city entity standing up and saying that we want our residents to do something else, then we need to be the model after that. Thank you.
My question to you is, what should I do? Should I continue my private trash service until we sort this out, which is what I'd like to do, because, you know, the bills from the city haven't stopped. You know, they, you know, we're accruing, you know, late payments, and we've actually had our attorney talk to the York Water solicitor that put a freeze so that they wouldn't shut off our water service. So like, we're, I'm, you know, not sure what to do, because it, it just runs like clockwork with our private trash contract, and I think switching to the city, you know, if that's ultimately what they decide, but like, I just don't know how to proceed, and I don't think either the staff did, so that's why it's been two years.
Well, um, the first time hearing about this was when you came to one of our meetings a couple of months ago, and did not know that this would be in discussion for committee until the agenda was sent to us. So there needs to be, this would fall under Public Works, under Councilwoman Dennis. There needs to be discussion between...
Yes.
Her and, and the Director, and then we also need legal advice as well to see how we need to proceed with this. For me, the issue is more of the, the waiver of the back charges. Um, we definitely need to look at, as Council Vice President said, our ordinance. And so, um, for me, that would be the particular issue, but we definitely need to have some discussion, because there hasn't been any discussion with council about this. It just appeared on the agenda for our committee for discussion.
I guess my other comment is they, you know, the, the one property that they did waive didn't quite meet the threshold. It was, quote, "close enough," and that's why, you know, waivers can be granted for unique, unique circumstances, and I'm not trying to get that property added back on, but, you know, the Keystone Color Works is a twenty-nine unit, you know, loft building, so I feel like that is, you know, it's not, you know, it's not a smaller property. The Jefferson Avenue one is a smaller property, so even if we could reason to potentially, you know, waive the back charges and add Jefferson on, because I'm sure you have a lot of investors that have six units, but very few that have, you know, above twenty-five, and maybe we could keep the Color Works building, you know, on private service. Now, do I like private service? I do, but I understand where you're coming from. You probably have, you know, a hundred landlords that own six-unit buildings. There's probably, you know, ten that own anything above twenty-five. So that's why I think if you change your ordinance, it may benefit you, and maybe even put in there a clause that if you have an approved waste management plan, you know, that it can be considered, because the last thing you want is a landlord that, you know, shoves all the trash in the corner. I, I understand why you want to control the trash.
Thank you. Another thing I see here is sewer slash refuse, so that would be discussion as well, is what is considered sewer, what is considered refuse in this amount?
Yeah, so, I mean, we've been paying our sewer bill. They bill them together, and we just broke out the refuse. So, you know, if it was a hundred dollars for sewer and fifty dollars for refuse, we send them a check for a hundred dollars, and we would send a note card that's saying that the refuse is private service, so then that's how we broke it out. But they would always send us, you know, a balance saying that, you know, it wasn't paid. It's been very complicated.
It's, it sounds like it.
Yeah, and, and at the end of the day, like, yeah, it's, it's real numbers in terms of the back charges, and it's taken way too long to get to this point, and, you know, obviously, you know, I'm, 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 I'm familiar with private trash service. It benefits us and our tenants, but I understand where you're coming from, so I, you know, appreciate, you know, your consideration. But yeah, I think our back bill, I mean, Jason, do you know what our back bill is? It's, I mean, last time I checked, it was over thirty thousand dollars.
I think for these two properties, it is, it's in the resolution. It's about seventeen.
Yeah, seventeen thousand dollars. And please note that we have not stopped our trash service. You know, we're still paying Republic, and I'm willing to pay, you know, the eight seventy-five. We were, we've been paying the eight seventy-five, correct, Jason?
Uh, I'm not sure. I'll hand it.
Okay. I believe we, we have been paying the minimum unit fee. We just haven't been paying the refuses for, since we have our private trash.
Okay, and then when, for the waiver for Madison Avenue, you said that was, was this two thousand fifteen slash two thousand sixteen, or was it more recent?
I, I think it, it may have, as Seth said, I think it might have been closer to COVID, so I think it might have been two thousand nineteen even.
Okay, so you're dealing with the same administration?
Yeah, it all came at once. We just all of a sudden got bills for all three properties.
Okay, I wasn't sure, because at, that time, you're talking about a transition...
No.
Administration, so it's the same administration. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, no problem.
Don't be frustrated, Seth. We'll work on this, hopefully.
Yeah, no, that's, that's fine. And just, as I said, the Color Works building, the city isn't even getting billed for the trash, according to Republic, so it's technically off the contract. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, this is up for our October fourth legislative, legislative meeting. Uh, all those in favor of approving this to appear on that agenda, please say aye. Opposed? Are we, who wants it to appear on the legislative agenda? Say aye.
I think we should keep it in committee.
Well, if we... Say no, wouldn't it stay in committee? All right, so if you don't approve it, it will stay in committee.
I would probably ask the motion to be, is there a motion to move this out of committee or to keep it in committee?
Is there a motion to move this out of committee or keep it in committee?
Keep it in committee.
Keep it in committee.
All right, it has been motion to keep it in committee. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It stays in committee. Mr. Gomez, did you have a question?
Manuel Gomez, I just want to briefly state, if anybody has an issues chart out there in Complete Communities Initiative world, this is the type of thing that you want to look at when you get pertinent feedback from a developer that approaches you amicably over services rendered, services that are being charged that were never rendered. You want to take that feedback in. It's the type of thing you want to look at. I would like some sort of flexibility to be built in in scenarios such as those. I've seen many waivers of all kinds. I usually opposed most of them that came before council for different reasons. I still believe that the principal thing to do would be to, and it's tough to say, not grant a waiver in this case, not that I think it'll be precedent-setting. I've seen many waivers and exemptions come through here, and they don't seem to be precedent-setting per se, but it definitely needs to be something that has to be looked at, because I wouldn't tend to expect that most developers or business people, number one, can endure this. You probably would have a lawyer talking to the legal entity on the other side of the equation. It wouldn't always be so amicable, so I really do appreciate the feedback that was brought forth today, and it shouldn't matter at all. I don't know Mr. Predix from a hole in the wall, if you pardon the expression, but that is, Predix Property is my property manager. But really shouldn't matter. I just want to see some of that flexibility built into what we do, because it's a hindrance. And let me tell you, if my water was shut off over something like this, as was potentially discussed as a consequence, I wouldn't be happy, and I would definitely know what the real agitator was in, in something like that really happened. Not cool. We should look at things like this so that we can prevent it in the future. So what comes to my mind, as minor as it may sound in it all, when you look at your Complete Communities Initiative, make sure we take this feedback in so that if we modify things for each particular type of economic development, a lot of these buildings that are being rehabbed is because that's what's available to be done for different reasons in the market. In other words, you'll probably see more of that type of development. You might see this come up again. It's probably best that we don't continue to make the same mistake.
Thank you. Moving on to our last item for our general committee, authorizing agreements with PennDOT, and it has the Solicitor's Office in parentheses.
Mr. Thompson, thank you for your patience. Come on up and tell us a little bit about what the state's dealing with, with eighty-three and, and what you want and why.
All right. Alan Thompson, I'm with All Rose LLC, consultant for PennDOT. We're working on the I-83 improvement project in York County. So, and I don't know, Jason, have you shared anything with, okay, so you've seen the plan, and you know where the acquisition is, is located?
If you could briefly share, email was sent to us yesterday.
Oh, just found out?
With more details.
Okay, so, believe it or not, the City of York owns some property outside of the City of York, and it's by the, what, Cor, Cordis Creek? Cudores Creek, yes, and PennDOT is, with their widening of I-83, needs a portion of that land, and it's mainly for a bridge embankment that's going to be installed from the project. And the project, if you're familiar with I-83, I did send the website for you to take a look at. You're going to six lanes out here and straightening up the interstate up through, up through the county. The take area, the actual fee take for right-of-way is eight thousand two hundred and thirty-two square feet. The temporary construction easement is thirty-one thousand two hundred and seventy-six feet. Total offer is six thousand one hundred dollars. And the city does have the option to donate to PennDOT if it so deems okay to do. I'm not going to do a motion for donation today. I won't do that.
Yeah, but just a little more background on the, on the property for council. This was property that, at the time, the wastewater treatment plant was built in the nineteen-tens, nineteen-twenty's. All, the city had been granted large swaths of property along the Cudores to put in the pipes that run to the wastewater treatment plant. Most of those, after the project was done, ended up just being an easement and went back to whoever the original property's owners were in the twenties. For some reason, and lost to history and time, we don't know why this property never went back to the other property owner. It just stayed with the city, and, and that's how it was tracked down in a title search from PennDOT, so that's, that's the history of it. And we don't have anything on it. It's, it's literally just a bank.
It was in nineteen fourteen. Nice handwritten deed if you, Paige Turner, for going to sleep tonight, so.
And... That info is, it was included in our legislative, I mean, our committee agenda that was dropped off on Friday. Any questions or comments from council? From the public? Thank you. This item is slated to appear on our October fourth legislative agenda. Is there a motion to approve this item to appear on our October fourth legislative meeting?
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed that will appear on our October fourth legislative meeting? Thank you for your patience, and safe travels. Yes?
Is that meeting, that when the mayor will sign the documents, and then I could process the payment?
At, at that meeting, council will, will consider the, the resolution. I, I don't suspect any opposition, but if council approves it, it'll go and go to the mayor, the mayor and controller to sign following the meeting that week, so.
Then I'll get the documents from you and submit for payment. Takes four to six weeks or so to get paid, so.
Sounds good.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to rules and administrative code, and I will turn this over to Councilman Rivera.
I motion to use this to our legislative meeting?
Well, we, we probably want to have some discussion on it. Number four, amending Article one forty-five. All right, this is a, amending Article one forty-five, Police Department of the Codified Ordinances, and we do have Commissioner Maudrell here. So Commissioner Maudrell, can you share with us what the amendments are and the reasoning?
Getting old, standing up was, uh, mature just now. Um, in a nutshell, Article forty-five and the reason why we're presenting this, the largest reason is, this is the first hurdle that exists with what we're trying to do with bringing additional officers on, what we're doing, trying to impact the community. In the nineteen fifties or sixties, our... In the 1950s or 60s, our forefathers, in their infinite wisdom, set the limit of 100 officers. They said that this city only needs 100 officers to keep it safe. And we've been functioning under that, under the guise of that ordinance. And regardless of what's occurring in the community, in the world, in the times around us, we've been hamstrung by that limit that was set when the world had a two-parent household and everybody drank milk with their meals and 14-year-olds didn't carry guns. So given the things that we're facing now, without this change to Article 145, we can't even start to have the conversation about giving us the additional resources we need to keep our community safe to be on par with literally every other third-class city that we're compared to on a daily basis. Your Harrisburgs, your Lancasters, your Wilmington Delawares that we just recently took the visit to. So we're asking for the modification in Article 145 to start that process by allowing us to at least take the governor off and be able to have additional officers if you deem it necessary to do so, if the mayor approves it and if you approve it. But until that time, until we deal with 145, which the changes that we set forth would allow us to be able to increase the numbers with your approval, with the appropriate budget to do so or the appropriate funding to do so. So without that, we will always be hamstrung with having to deal with what we have, basically a 100-person force. So in addition to that, there are some other caveats in Article 145 that I would highlight. One is, in my coming back to the police department from my first go-around, one of the things that I saw as being inefficient was our detective bureau being run by people who weren't investigators, people who didn't have any investigative experience, merely by the fact that they were lieutenants in rank through the civil service process. They were being put in charge of a resource that is so necessary in a community like ours, a detective division, with absolutely no experience or background to be able to lead investigators. So seeing that that made no sense, it would be like having a principal that never taught. We, I moved to create the position of detective commander to allow for growth potential for investigators and then be able to create a next-level supervision that would be able to be in charge of the detective bureau but have worked his, worked their way through the process and got there by actually having investigative experience. It seems like it should have been a novel concept. It doesn't sound like it should have been anything like rocket science. But it definitely was something we hadn't done before in recent years, probably the past 13 since Denny Williams would have retired. Because back when I was here to first go-around, detective bureau was always run by detectives. And then over the years, they turned it into a near civil service position where they just were promoting lieutenants into the spot. And they were placeholders. They were literally placeholders. They would tell the detectives when they first got the position, keep things quiet. If you need me to, I mean, take care of any budgetary issues or sign overtime, let me know. But they offered no support with respect to investigations. We've had a temporary person in that position thus far, Detective Andy Baez. And he has done a yeoman's job in the position. I say that, I say that with no hesitation because not only is he able to take care of the administrative duties that are necessary in that office, but he's a working detective that still handles cases, that still comes in at nighttime for each shooting, that is able to give all the other detectives coming along the vast, the vast benefit of his experience of 12, 17, 15 years being a major case crimes investigator. So we ask that as part of this 145 change, that we would be allowed to establish that position and give it what it needs to be able to exist by ordinance so that we don't have any more opposition from the FOP. Additionally, detective first class, it would recognize that the detective first class position, which we've always used to supervise specialty units because they're individuals with experience and with defined skill sets that are unique to their position, it would recognize their ability to be able to, by ordinance and by contract, supervise individuals that are part of these specialty squads. So while it seems like it's just a formality and an in-house need, it would definitely help clarify things with some of the opposition and some of the clashes that we've had with the FOP to this point. So while it may seem like a small thing to you all with Article 145, we're looking forward to being able to get this passed because it's going to clear up so many things for us moving forward. Or at least open the door to it. Thank you. Any questions for me?
Thank you, Commissioner. Just when it, under the, the police commissioner or chief police shall be, this is B. It has a, the chief of police shall be designated from the force, and then I see number 43. I don't, is that just, it's striked out, but I don't understand.
That was the previous page header.
Oh, okay, okay. I didn't know if there was numbers associated with, okay.
I'm sorry, I'm still trying to find it. I'm a little cloudy. I took allergy medicine before I came.
Oh, no.
Are we good?
Yes, mhm. Thank you. Any questions or comments? Other questions or comments from council?
My apologies for suffering a brain fart when introducing this, sorry.
Thank you for your patience as well, Commissioner.
Thank you. So motion to approve to move this to the legislative, our next legislative meeting.
I make a motion.
Me, right? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So we're, we're approving this to go to the legislative meeting on October? Fourth? Oh, no, I'm sorry. So we're on the next one. So introducing the amendment, Article 1728? Go ahead, Manny. Manny, you up?
Trying to get your attention. I had a comment on the previous item.
On the police department item?
Yes.
That's fine.
Particularly the language where we're removing, first we're adding the police department. If we're looking at 145 dot 01, under section A, the police department shall, then we're adding, be staffed at a number determined by the mayor. Now, this wasn't language that was there. So this is now something that we are specifically putting under the scope of the mayor, the exact number, the staffing of the police department. So that seems to me a explicit power we're giving the mayor that wasn't there by definition, to my understanding. If you move on to section B, now this is what's, well, what at this point has been stricken, or at least we're moving to strike it and it'll be on the legislative agenda. It tied our funding to state or federal agencies in terms of increasing the employees or additional positions. And it used language that said that would be approved by council. So we're striking the approval by council and we're adding the specific scope and power of the mayor to determine the specific staffing unilaterally. Could be zero, doesn't mention a minimum, could be much more. Of course, we don't anticipate a zero, but it's what the plain language allows for. I don't believe that unilateral scope and that power that we're giving the mayor's office is conducive to community control over the police department. I do believe that you should revisit language that would give the mayor the sole authority to determine those staffing levels because it's not something that we've done historically. And I don't think it's the direction that we should take, particularly if you look at what has taken place in terms of movements and efforts to bring policing back under community control. This would seem to be at odds with those measures and those actions. So I think we should look at that language very carefully and determine, do we really want to strike that type of thing from council's purview? And do we really want to specifically place it in the mayor's office?
I see what you're saying. So if the first line, I mean, looking at this, we got help with this with outside attorneys that actually did the drafting of this. So the first line you're saying in essence should say, determined by city council through funds provided within the current budget or by supplemental appropriations rather than the mayor.
And, but if I could clarify, if I could clarify though, that's currently how we do it now. The mayor determines staffing in the police department with council setting the budget. And then the mayor determines how many officers there are.
Even then, if you look at what will be B and is currently C, it says the police department shall be under the direct supervision and control of the mayor. So that's, that's just following suit. It's just he appoints a police commissioner or chief who is professionally qualified to be the administrator. But.
I just wanted to say, I don't have a problem with it either way. I just need to get rid of that 100-person limit because it's not the 50s anymore.
Right, but where it does say that the mayor would determine it through funds provided within the current budget. So the mayor, it would start with the budget for the new year and the mayor would present with you a budget that would work off by numbers that consisted of a number of staff and it would be spelled out that it's so many officers. You then decide if you're approving that budget as a line item or reducing it, which would then impact the number of officers we would be able to have on staff. Throughout the year then, we come to you every time that there's a request for appointment of new officers. And that expectation even now is that it's coming through and questions have come from council before that this fits in either the 100-count we have or within the budget that we have currently available for this year. And that, again, is usually ran through my office, myself, to determine that, yes, we can pick people, you know, we can add new officers now because we have, it's been budgeted to do so. So if at any point what was part of B was essentially like, if we got a JAG grant or a SAFER grant, some kind of federal or state grant that would provide salaries and FICA and the expenses for new officers, which we've gotten in the past, that was the caveat that allowed us to go over 100 as long as accepting that grant and amending the budget was approved by council. And again, council approves the appointments when they come through. So council still does have much, much say in when we bring officers in. So the mayor cannot say, I want 150 officers, here's the budget for it. And council has the right to vote to agree to that or not. And then throughout the year, he's like, I want to add on another 15, you know, each of the two academies. Again, council has the right to approve the appointments or not as they come through, the current process.
I don't think that's Manny's question.
It wasn't really so much a question, and thank you. I'm very much aware of the process and how it has worked in these chambers. My specific concern relates to the black and white text that's been provided to us here in terms of what's being stricken and what's being added. If we're going to add it, let's make sure that we're explicit as to why we're adding it. And what is being stricken, let's make sure that we're fully cognizant of what's being stricken and why. I can't help but to, well, pun not intended, but to be struck by the fact that we're removing explicit language where we approved by council and we are strictly giving the scope in plain language to the mayor's himself or herself.
But you're looking at two different sections, Manny.
Understood, understood. But you understand what I mean here when I say, if you're striking in section A one thing and then you're adding language when you say it's only the mayor, that has meaning. And that's going to have a certain gravitas to it. It's not just there for nothing. I'm simply saying if council wants to move forward with that language, be fully cognizant of any potential effects. Of course, appropriations in the budget are the purview of council. Sure, that checks and, those checks and balances are baked in elsewhere. But if we're going to take it separately, again, I'm going to reiterate, not speaking of the spirit of how we do things or how it's been done, only speaking to what we're striking. You strike that first sentence there after, police department shall, and you add, or the intention will be, staffed at a number determined by the mayor, well, is that really what you want to do? And think through the potential effects or consequences. Do you want to trust? Are you going to trust that it will be a certain thing? Because at another point, if you insert here, provided within the, well, within will be taken out, but provided by the current budget or by supplemental appropriations, well, those supplemental appropriations can be anything. And that can potentially be well outside of the construct of what we're used to doing and seeing. I'm simply saying be fully cognizant of what it is that we're putting here in plain text. That's it. I wasn't discussing the spirit of how we do things. I'll have you here all night if we wanted to do that. I just simply wanted to point those things out. Most definitely, we'll have further discussion. I think that this is preparing us for some critical changes. I'm not exactly opposed to those things themselves per se. It's just knowing what we're doing and why we're doing it. And as it pertains to trust, I have none.
Commissioner, who recommended these changes? I'm sorry.
We, we did. We, sorry.
And this particular question?
We recommended the changes. The language itself was actually done with consultation through outside council. If I remember correctly, it wasn't even that it was solely us sitting with Jason. It was the labor attorney.
And they, and he, and that person said specifically that staffed at a number determined by the mayor through funds provided, he's he?
Yes, this draft came from Joe Rudolph, our outside labor council. And as, as I said, this is the current process now. The mayor staffs the police department. The mayor is in charge of the police department. He can staff it however he wants to now. He just can't go over 100. All this does would be remove the 100 limit and everything would stop, right? Exactly the same as it does now.
Okay.
What other third-class cities has this same ordinance?
Um, the other third-class cities have a similar ordinance. It's that their cap is much higher. So you're not going to hear the same complaints because Chief Carter's is like 165 or 175. Lancaster's is like 160. So they, they have a similar, they have similar language. It's just their number of officers is so high that it's a non-issue.
Thank you for the, for the questions, the discussion. It's noted that was actually.
And I think what the gentleman before was making reference to was, again, not how it's done, but in removing this particular section, it literally takes out the ability of the council to have any input in that whatsoever. And what's the justification for that? Whether it's done or not, in the law, in the ordinance as it stands right now, city council does have the ability to approve or disapprove. Taking this out, city council actually removes this ability.
I'm sorry, where do you see that?
This is, I'm looking here on 145 01. Section B that's being removed, the first section that's being removed, the language is being replaced by EB.
Well, EB's already, EB, that E is the new B, but that's just renumbering. That's already in the ordinance. The only thing that would be changing would be, and that section B only applies to when the city receives state and federal grants. Council has to approve accepting that grant before the city can hire more officers over the 100 number that already is capped.
And what, in response, just so that, just for clarification, what, in removing B, you would actually substitute approval to be only in the mayor's office versus if we keep B, then the approval stands in both the mayor and has to be approved by, by council. So in effect, you are replacing B with EB. That's already part of the regulation. It does, I guess the issue is why are we taking out that particular piece? What does that do with the checks and balances? That's the, that's the.
Yeah, I mean, I think the goal in removing that was just that it wouldn't be necessary anymore. anymore, because we no longer have the 100 cap. That section is in there just to address when we have federal or state funds come in that allow us to go over the 100 cap, because they're fully funded, and that's why the cap is there. The 100 cap is to make sure that with the cost of pensions and healthcare and everything else, so we have a way to pay for any officer over 100. Now, if we don't have the 100 cap anymore, you no longer necessarily need that. Obviously, we know that council still has to approve the budget, would still have to approve the budget for any officers the city wants to hire, those officers then get approved by council. So, so none of that changes. I mean, we could leave it in there, but it would be superfluous.
Having, I didn't, I didn't want to, having had the experience that we got a chance to go through, Manuel, when we were going through the drone conversation and stuff, and, and it was something that I learned from you about if it's not in there, that it's not really happening, or it leaves an implication, a certain implication, I would just like to say on record that as a department, we wouldn't be opposed to a slight tweak in the language change in the new A to read by the mayor and city council through funds provided within the current, but like just adding back in, and city council.
That, that, that changes the entire, the executive branch is in charge of the police department. Council does not get to say staffing levels for any department. They set the budget, and then the administration determines how to spend that money.
So, if adding back in, approved by city council, would be, that would somehow be inappropriate?
Yeah, I guess I, now I have a question for you, Jason. So, if adding back in, approved by city council, which is already there if they don't make the 145 change?
It's only in B that it says approved by city council. That's, that's not in A.
But B is still part of the, it's still, but I understand how to read ordinances too, because it's what I've been doing for the last 20 years.
Yeah.
And it's all one, one concurrent sentence. Like, that's the way all laws are written, they're one concurrent sentence. So it's part with subsections, like that's, I get it. So, part of the subsection later is speaking to the fact that it's approved by council after being determined by the mayor. So that language can't go back in, or it would some way be?
I mean, if we want to leave B in, we can leave B in, but A does not say, A does not say anything about council approving staffing.
I see what you're saying, so you wouldn't do it by adding it to that sentence, you would just leave B in?
Just leave B in.
Yeah. I would be good with that.
So obviously, the issue is not, for me, is not approving more officers. The, the issue is, if and when you approve more officers, I think, from what I'm reading, the mayor wants to have complete authority over that, because it's not part of the budget that's, that's approved by council and the federal and state government. Is that what I understand? So anything over that 100 police officers, the mayor wants to have final say, because he doesn't want to go over the budget.
Well, I don't believe the mayor was weighing in much on this. This was all Joe Rudolph. Like, this was, yeah, the mayor wasn't really weighing in much on the language either way. This was something we were crafting together with labor attorney. So, like, he doesn't have skin in that part of the game that he's, yeah. So like, like Jason's saying, if it's as easy as leaving B in there, so we capture both pieces of the language appropriately, we're okay with that, because he's, he was still a contractor, Joe Rudolph, it wasn't like it was Jason wrote it, so.
Manny?
Manuel Gomez, to clarify again, it's not so much the matter of modifying the amount of officers that we may potentially pay for and then deploy. It's so much more that the explicit language there included for the mayor, but then also what you're taking out, regardless of the fact that it's a different section. Section B to be stricken if we leave A behind, because that's not so much a thing in terms of the number. But B was there to address if you did go above and beyond 100. So they're definitely correlated and tied together. You can still keep the fact that council, regardless of whether it's a supplemental appropriation or otherwise, whether it comes from a general fund or whatever, federal or state grants, as it was written before, that council be the body to approve. You may say that's superfluous and that it's already there by method of the process set forth. Well, that's the language that we had, and I think that in one way or another, we should maintain that language if it is our explicit intent. If it's not the intent and you want to remove that back and continue to put it more where it's a unilateral thing, piece by piece, well, then that's something that you may wish to consider, but by God, will there be more discussion and activity beyond, if that's definitely something that we're actually going to be beholden to as a community. I don't know who Joe Rudolph is, but let me tell you something. Not everything is fit for all communities. There's no one-size-fits-all. And part of what this looks like is that you may have had some consultancy, legal, legal or otherwise, may not necessarily be as appropriate for what we do at a granular level. Might sound like we're parsing words, but this is where things matter. Even though it seems minor, it's major to me, because I've been here for many, many, many years battling issues that guess from where they derive, procedural or administrative, what seems like nonsense and fluff. And guess what? It turns into real, significant, impactful issues once it manifests in the community. If I'm here today, it's to prevent those things, it's not to agitate or to antagonize. Believe me, I can do those things, I just would rather not to. I don't want to see that. Oh, that's not a bluff.
Thank you for the input and discussion. So, council, this does, will appear on our legislative agenda, and we've had discussion and notes.
Okay. Move on? Okay, so, moving on to, sorry about that. Yes, I know, I go. Okay, amending Article 1728, the vacant property review committee.
Yeah, and council, this just changes, the state legislature changed the definition of blight in the state law. This is just changing our definition of blight in our codified ordinances to match the state definition of blight.
Thank you. Solicitor Hoyt did send out changes in, I believe, last week. Any questions or comments from council or the public?
I don't have any. Oh, sorry.
No, it's okay, we're moving forward. With those questions, I motion to move this forward to the legislative meeting on October 4th. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Moves forward, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Rivera. Is there any council comment? Any administration comments?
None for me, thank you.
Our next committee meeting is scheduled for October 26, 2022, at 6:00 PM in council chambers. Thank you all for attending. This meeting is adjourned.